Well, good evening, everyone.
This meeting is being recorded.
July 6, 2021, regular Temple City City Council meeting to order pursuant to Section 3 of the executive order issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, cities allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call 1-669-900-6833, meeting ID 811-1858-2184, pass code 788155, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube, Connect with TC. Madam Clark, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Member Visgarra?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Here.
Here you.
Here. For those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comments open during an agenda item discussion. You can also email your requests to speak to cityclerk@temposity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comments. At this time, we want to thank Mr. Jerry Jim Bazin with Wander Cleaners and Drapery. He will provide invocation tonight. Wander's Cleaners and Drapery is located at 9136 East Lastuna Street, Temple City. And Mr. Jim Bazin, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Let's come before our God tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask your blessing upon this council meeting, and I pray that you would give an extra measure of wisdom and discernment to the leaders that you have put into place. Thank you for their commitment to see that we are a city of progress and forward-thinking. Thank you for our administrative staff that take care of the day-to-day operations. Thank you that we will be celebrating two capital improvement projects in just a few months. We will be celebrating the newly renovated Temple City Library and our first new park in over 60 years. As the pandemic has been tough for programming in our city, we thank you for the fund department and their commitment to make sure that we did not just stop, but they provided programming for all. We still have a semblance of normalcy. One example of that is our concerts in the park resuming in two weeks and other new and exciting programming. As our nation celebrated 245 years of independence last Sunday, we recognize that we are utterly dependent on you for everything, including safety. To that end, we pray for those that serve in the military around the world guaranteeing our freedom. We also think of our sheriffs at Temple Station and fire personnel at Fire Station 47. Please keep them safe and free from harm. I ask this all for your glory and for your sake. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Jim Bazin. At this time, please rise and do our flag of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. Next item is ceremonial matters. There are two proclamations for the night's meeting, and one of the proclamation is the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. The other proclamation that I'm about to read is the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. So I'm going to read the Mosquito Control Awareness Week proclamation right now. For June 20 to 26, 2021, is our National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is an international organization dedicated to providing leadership, information, and education leading to the enhancement of public health and quality of life through the suppression of mosquitoes. And whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is dedicated to preserving the public health and well-being through the use of safe and environmentally sound mosquito control programs since 1935. And whereas the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District follows an integrated vector management approach that prioritizes mosquito control methods by the most environmentally conscious and sustainable means. And whereas the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health considered concluded, Los Angeles County accounted for 41% of the state of California's West Nile virus cases and 17% of the cases in the United States of America in 2020. And whereas excess number of mosquitoes decreased standard of living, diminishes enjoyment of the outdoors, public parks and playground, hinder outdoor work, and reduced property values. And whereas the threat of AID mosquitoes in our community increases the risk of a local outbreak of dengue, fever, Zika, Yellow River, and Chikungunya. And whereas the city of Temple City, in cooperation with the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, has been involved in protecting public health from mosquito-borne illnesses. And now therefore, I, Vincent Yu, as mayor and on behalf of the City Council of Temple City, do hereby proclaim June 20 through June 26 to be designated as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Okay, next proclamation. Parks and Recreation Month, July 2021. Whereas parks and recreation programs, an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including Temple City, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities and ensuring the health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs fill active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic diseases, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax space, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are functional to the environmental well-being of our community. Now therefore, I, Vincent Yu, Mayor of the City of Temple City, California, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Temple City. Thank you. Next item is public comment on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the City Council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. For those calling in, your audio will now be unmuted. We say your name so that you can be added to the speaker's list. To avoid calls from speaking over each other, we will call your name to speak. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@temposity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Do we have any public comments, Madam Clark? I don't see any.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
There are no email public comment, and we don't have any.
No. Okay, then I will close public comment. Next item is consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. If members of the City Council persons in the audience wish to address any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Madam Clark, are there any email requests to speak?
No, Mayor, there are no email requests.
Okay, and I actually don't see anyone called in except perhaps Ella Lee, the Girl Scout for the Live Oak Park Art mural. You want to speak on your items, Ella?
Oh, hi. Yeah, I have a presentation, but I'll just speak. So I'm trying to, on the back of the scoreboard at Live Oak Park softball field, I want to paint a mural to help inspire girls to play softball. The main part of the mural is a softball, a girl hitting a ball, and there's the American flag and a plane in the air with a sign that says, "Home of the..." Temple City, "Home of the Camellias." And the mural will be very inclusive to everybody.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any comments from council? Or if not, then we're ready for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor Yu, I'll move to approve the calendar.
I'll second.
It's moving second. Madam Clark, roll call, go, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Visgarra?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Here you.
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved, and Ella, your item has been approved. So, congrats.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ella.
And thank you for that public service, Ella. Next item is public hearing. There is none unfinished business. There is none new business. There is none update from Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Yu, members of the council. Just a real brief, a couple items. Mr. Azumi is on the line with us, and I'm surprised because he worked all day Saturday and all day Sunday. We had on Saturday eight personnel between the sheriffs and city and 13 personnel between sheriffs and a city doing firework enforcement. We issued 27 citations over the two-day period, the most we've ever issued, confiscated about 300 pounds, which is quite a bit considering the amount of personnel that we have as well. So kudos to Mr. Azumi, our Sheriff's Department, and all the teams in Parks Department helped out as well. Code enforcement was essential in helping us try to target. It was still a mess out there all throughout the San Gabriel Valley, but I think we, the kudos to staff for doing as much as you can honestly ask staff to do during that period of time. Remember, citations have to be issued in the act, and so 27 citations over a two-day period is pretty amazing. So great work on their part. Your next meeting, too, we will have a little early. We will have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to go over some of the initial work done for the housing element. Our housing element, which was, is due this fall. We have some interesting news. We didn't think we'd be hitting our RENA numbers, but we actually have, at least at this point in time, before we submit to the State of California, a surplus amount of affordable units. ADUs are zoning. The council's actions in the past with the specific plan pushing the density that into the corridors into the specific plan area have played off from a zoning standpoint. So that's some good news, but we want to talk to the Planning Commission and you about some of the programs and other things we're looking forward in presenting final draft to submit to HCD, the state, who certifies the housing element, which several of you have been through that process many years ago. That is it for me for tonight, Mayor Yu.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next item is update from Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items of interest tonight. The first is, the people may know, in the State of California, it's statewide eviction protections through September 30th of this year. As part of that eviction protection, the state is increasing cash assistance to low-income tenants and to smaller landlords. Those programs can be found on the State of California's website, ca.gov. They have pretty easy to find links to those for both tenants and landlords. The second is that Orange County, and notwithstanding Mr. Cook's notice to you that at our next meeting, we'll be discussing the RENA numbers, Orange County has filed a lawsuit against the Department of Housing and Community Development about the RENA numbers. HCD, you may recall, put 1.34 million homes in the Southern California area. Orange County believes that that was severely overestimated, and based on using its own data and counts and what it believes are the past practices of the state, only 651,000 units would be necessary. Being as that's just about half, little less than half, it would be, it would have a pretty big impact. What that would mean, whole housing element process, we don't know. The lawsuit has just been filed, but we'll be monitoring that and bringing it back to you as is necessary. Finally, the San Diego Association of Governments is considering pushing a road charge for miles driven within California to replace gas tax. The S-Sandag, as it's called, believes that the gas tax effectiveness is falling due to the rise in electric and fuel-efficient vehicles, and that this road charge would help fund part of its $160,000 plan to develop public transit. So if that does pass down in the San Diego area, we may see it as a future replacement for the gas tax, which, as you know, is a part of the, significant part of the city's budget, dealing with road and other transit issues. That's my report for tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next item is council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Are there any reports from anywhere? So seeing none, we move on to the next item. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. Nothing really to report. I'm glad we got through another Fourth of July. I'm glad, happy that staff was able to get out there and try to keep the numbers down as best we could. It's hard to catch everybody. I know that there was somebody about 100 yards from my house, going for about two hours, but apparently he got into the radar somehow. But other than that, it was pretty, pretty safe night. Nobody burned down. Nobody got hurt, at least significantly that I heard of. So that's a good thing. On a better note, here at the park, as I said, Live Oak Park tonight, it's a beautiful night at the park. I'm pleased to say that there are many people out here on our walking path tonight, just walking by with their dogs, enjoying the evening. And I have to say, I think this is one of the best things we ever did at the city of, putting this walking path. People do use it quite a bit, and actually, most of them are still wearing their masks, which is kind of a good sign as well. So if you guys have nothing else to do this week, come on out to Live Oak Park. I'll be here all week. We've got some great Little League games going on, and both Temple City American and Temple City National League are both playing in the tournament, and hopefully they'll do well, and it'll be a good week. And so I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. It must be a first, right? Actually, directly holding a meeting just outdoor in a park.
I'm sorry, say that again. Oh, having a park, a meeting at the park? Yeah. Well, I figured, I figured it was a short meeting tonight, and it wouldn't be too bad. And so far, they haven't needed me. So, so far, so good.
All right, great. Thank you for that. Councilmember Min, any comment?
I think, thank you, Mayor Yu. Yeah, I just want to thank staff and our Sheriff's Department for doing a good job with the fireworks suppression and enforcement. In fact, one happened at the end of my block. We, my neighbors and I, we were out in front with, you know, they had brought their, their own safe and sane, and then just at the end of the block, there were some not, if and not so sane fireworks going on. And we witnessed first, and one of the whites in action coming down, and they paused at the intersection, and as soon as they started setting it off, the black and white veered down the street and ignited them. So I witnessed first.
Oh, great.
One, one of the 27. And actually, I found out later, it was very deputy of the year who made that. So it was coincidence. He didn't see me, and I didn't see him, but I found out, I know later. But anyway, yeah, that's, that's an impressive number, because I think the last couple of years, when we got reports back, we, we get roughly maybe like a dozen citations or so, if I recall. So, yeah, kudos for doing it. I know a lot of people were kind of getting out there, they're pent up, COVID pandemic quarantine during, during the Fourth of July. And, yeah, I mean, it's too bad, there's too many of these illegal fires that just sound like bombshells going off. But, yeah, hopefully we keep working. Hope everyone had a safe Fourth of July. Just on a final note, I do want to make a quick shout out to a student organization that originated with Temple City High students. Originally, it was called FC, which stood for Chinese-American Leaders of America. And I guess they, it was started by a former youth committee member, Kristi Lee. She graduated, I believe, two years ago. And so one of the current president, her name is Sabrina Zhang, invited me to one of their Zoom meetings, just for me to share some story. You know, young folks from, from Temple City who joined and asked a lot of great questions. Yeah, our, our youth is doing some phenomenal things that sometimes are kind of under the radar. They, they've rebranded their organization and are called AllySGV, A-L-L-Y, San Gabriel Valley. I think they're trying to capture a larger regional pool of high school students. And, yeah, very impressed that the president is a, is a freshman going on to a sophomore. The way they, they talk and are able to organize impressed me beyond measure, just similar to how our youth committee members are always phenomenal. I'm so impressed at our youth. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to the new crop of youth committee members for this coming year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Visgar, any items? You're on mute. Councilmember Visgar, you're on mute.
I was in Oxnard on the Fourth, and the fireworks were outlawed. It sounded like a war. I mean, it was incredible, and it went on till after midnight. And I hear it was the same down here. So I guess we all had to deal with it. The sheriffs went crazy there, too, trying to keep a lid on it, but they weren't really able to. I have one thing to throw out there. As you know, I'm involved with the Kiwanis, and right now, we're looking for projects to get involved in hunger-related things or anything else. I would appreciate any, any input from any of you as to some things that we can look at, that we can get involved in and help with. Meals, I don't know. If you have any ideas, please form them to me, either text me or call me or whatever. We'd appreciate it. We want to have, we want to, want to have something we can take on, but that is within the scope of our abilities. So I'll just leave you with that. Like I said, I would appreciate any help. And I also thank all the staff for the work they have to do on the board. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
A couple of things. I was in Alhambra for the Fourth of July and left my sister's house about nine o'clock, and it was so out of control in Alhambra, as it is every year. I honestly don't even know why they put effort into having helicopters fly around, because it's all the illegal fireworks are just highlighting the helicopters. But I really don't see a lot of patrol in the city of Alhambra. I think they gave up a long time ago. I'm not quite sure. But coming into San Gabriel at about nine o'clock and then into Temple City seemed so mild in comparison, although the firework noise did last probably till about two in the morning. It was just like a war zone. Just, you could hear the, it sounded like bombs in the distance, but.
How did your dogs do, Cindy?
Um, they were locked in the kitchen with music on while we were gone, and when I came home, they just ran to be by our sides and literally were barking from upstairs, because you could hear it more upstairs than when they were downstairs. So it was a, not a very restful evening, because they were really irritated and agitated, I should say. And they finally fell asleep about three. And the little one is the one that you like so much, Fernando. She's the one that doesn't stop barking at the fireworks. But I just wanted to share a couple of things regarding mosquito awareness. And thank you, staff, and Brian Arizumi for doing the proclamation for us. I want to update you with just where the most recent positive cases have been. And as of July 2, 2021, West Nile positive birds were found in Covina. Covina had the highest number. They had nine positive test samples come back positive, and there were four dead birds that were infected with West Nile virus. South Pasadena had one dead bird, but through the water samples, they didn't find any positive samples. The unincorporated LA County area, kind of where near you, Vincent, there were three mosquito samples that came back positive. And West Covina had three mosquito samples come back positive. So we're, you know, urging everyone to take the following actions to stay healthy and bite-free, and that is, of course, to tip out stagnant water around the home. Try and do that at least twice a week. Toss unused containers that can hold stagnant water. And of course, use some type of protection that the CDC recommends. If you go onto the CDC website, they have a listing of about five or six different types of protection you can use from DEET, oil of lemon, and eucalyptus, and quite a few other ones. And I want to remind everyone that mosquito is a, a control is a responsibility of everyone, not just the mosquito district, but businesses and property owners. Everyone needs to do their part to keep West Nile virus out of our city. And just want to remind everyone to please come prepared to the concerts in the park. So excited that that's going So excited that that's going to resume. But if you could bring some spray, maybe also little packets you can bring. But if you can put it on before and then maybe reapply towards the later evening. I think it would be a great opportunity for us to stay mosquito bite free. I think that's it with the mosquitoes, but you can always go on to the mosquito and vector control site. There's so much valuable information. And I want to encourage our teachers in our district to go on to that site. They have so many great educational programs. And even things in the summer that kids can do, they can be mosquito positive detectives. And they tell them how to go about and, and look for samples. You can call the mosquito district. They'll come and pick them up. So there's a lot of things that are very educational that will make even the kids realize that everybody has a responsibility to share in trying to prevent West Nile virus. Pretty much that's it. Thank you to, you know, our sheriff's department, Brian and Brian for helping our city stay as quiet as it could be with the Fourth of July. And it was just so nice to be able to spend time with family and friends and seeing other people do this as we recover from this pandemic. So I'm very much looking forward to more opportunities where our community can come together. And then lastly, one thing I wanted to just share about the trash service. I've seen so many trash cans out, but they're backwards. So the trash trucks have, and workers have to stop and then turn the trash cans around so that they can go up into the trash can, into the trash truck. So I believe it's, you turn it, isn't it curbside is where the opening is. And the bar is the back of the trash can and that should be facing the street.
The bar at the bottom?
So that can be, no, there's a bar up on, it's kind of up on the top, isn't it?
No, it, it's about halfway up the camp.
Right. And that's where they lift the trash can. That should face where the truck is coming. So the lid
Actually, actually that bar has nothing to do with the way they pick them up. They have a wraparound, two wraparound arms that they wrap around the entire bin. And so what, what people need to do is remember to, when you put those bins out, leave about at least six to eight inches between the bins so that the arms can get around them. And the wheels should be against the curb.
But they're asking that the bar is facing
Well, yeah, the bar be facing the street, but they don't use the bar to pick up the trash cans at all. I don't, it's, I think it's just there for rigidity or something, but the bars, they, they come with two large arms. And it's just like surround it and then pick it up. And then one, one recommendation too, that I noticed is you can't really slam or push the trash into the bin, the, the regular trash, because if it's not loose, it won't come out. Because they don't shake it. They just basically tip it over. And I found out the hard way, half of my trash was, was still in my can when they put it back down.
You squeezed too much in?
You know, I, I'm, I'm glad you brought this up, Cindy, and I don't mean to interrupt, but there was a lot to be said for a lot of misinformation and a lot of lack of information, I think, that Athens and the city put out there regarding this new trash pickup. It's not that easy and people just don't have any information. I mean, I, I don't have any information and you think that we would have it. So I, I, I think we still need to get out there and put the word out of what we're doing and how we're supposed to be doing it. So.
Right. I, I was going to suggest that staff maybe go out and just see what's going on because every street has something different. I mean, there are still trash cans out with trash and boxes in them. And then there's the trash bins are out there. And, and I have a question and people have asked me this and I don't know the answer and I can't find it. But the little Keurig coffee pods, because it's plastic on the outside and you're supposed to put grinds in a different trash bin, where do you put those? What color trash bin do the little Keurig empty cups go in? Does anybody know?
If they're not a hundred percent clean, then they can go in the regular refuse. If they're one hundred percent clean and have the recycling symbol on them, they can go in the recycling.
So even though there's grinds in there, they go in the recycling?
No, if they have grinds, that means they're dirty, they're contaminated. So they need to go into the trash. If they're cleaned out, rinsed out, clean and have the recycling symbol on them, they can go in recycling.
Okay. I doubt if anybody's going to do that.
Because we're going to have a challenge. That's going to have pizza boxes, everything like that. If it's soiled, it's trash. It's a, it has to be truly as contaminant free as possible.
And then what about the, do the, the lids have to be closed? So can you fill that trash can to the brim and beyond and they're going to take it? Because I see so many trash cans with open lids and they're just, stuff is all coming out of the top.
The trash cans should be closed, should be completely closed. The Athens will provide, we're getting through a grace period. This is going to take some time for the community to transition. But they will be providing warnings to those who habitually abuse that. I've seen it on even where I live on my street where Pasadena will come in and warn people for abusing that. But the, they, the, the idea is for that, the, the lids to completely close.
And I was wondering if we could get our communications department, Tini and her department to send out on social media some like specifics about that, like little tips they can do on frequently, like the Keurig cups. Like if I saw that, I would be, oh my goodness, now I know how to do it. So things that are simple, but we've all done it a certain way for so long. I mean, I really am struggling in my own home, how to figure out how to do all this. So.
Do you, does everybody have two trash cans in their home?
Yes, I do now.
I'm going to, I don't yet.
So anything we can do to continue to educate, I think it would be kind of nice to have like a couple of tips a day on trash for things that are common questions, like ask the question and then give the answer. That would be really helpful.
Sure, no problem.
And, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prokem. Actually, it was great that you brought this up, Mayor Prokem, because yeah, a lot of people probably put their trash can everywhere which way. And, and yeah, there are the dos and don'ts with these trash cans. I think it's worth discussing and, and thank you for bringing that up. I mean, one thing that in addition with Tom's comment, not putting them so close to each other. I haven't seen anybody stacking them, but you can't stack them either. So because one would prevent the, the arm from picking up the other one. So, but thanks for bringing that up. Actually today I got a phone call from residents, actually commenting on how great the city looks with the, with the new trash can. So got some good feedback from at least one resident today. And she said, well, at first I thought I don't have enough room for my trash, but turns out a lot of her regular trash now goes into the, the blue bin, the recycle bin. So it wasn't, it's actually gives you a lot. And the only thing that she worries about was really the green, the, the green waste. But I told her that, well, you can keep your old trash can and use that for, you know, for overflow. So, you know, so wait till next time. So anyways, great suggestion, Mayor Prokem. I think it's a great that if Mr. Cook and, and staff can kind of put together some guidelines and I think will be very helpful for all of us. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Are, are they still picking up the old trash cans we want to get rid of if we put them out there?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Um, Mayor, if I could just share, someone posted on Facebook, I'll try and find it. But they, they posted some very creative ways to reuse your old trash cans from making planters with them, putting holes on the bottom. So staff wants to be creative and offer some suggestions for repurposing those old trash cans. That would be nice too.
Right, right. All right.
Mayor Yu, I'm sorry. Mayor Yu, just real quick, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one thing. Actually, I know it slipped my mind these weeks. Been going fast, so fast, but we did install our new youth committee. We completed our interviews. I want to thank Adam Motzamoto, Eliana Flores and Julian Munoz and Twan, one of our former members for selection process. And we went back to ten members and we're very happy with that group and look forward to having them all meet you soon. And Brian and Odin just walked by. That's Peggy's husband and Peggy's dog just walked by me. Yeah.
If you get a chance, give me a call in a couple of days and I can give you some opportunities for transit that they're doing this summer.
Okay, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So, and, and thank you again to staff and especially, especially Brian Arizumi and Sheriff Department Public Safety staff. I mean, I don't know where I live. Maybe I live a little closer towards the middle of Temple City. And you know, the fireworks wasn't bad at all. So thank you for, for doing all that great, great job in, in guarding our streets. Moving on to the next item is additional public comments. So, Madam, are there any email comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no email public comment requests.
And I don't see any callers. So with that, I will close public comments. The meeting is adjourned. Councilmember Chavez, you can go back to officiating your game.
The recording has stopped.